... Two, one, two, 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 two. Two, 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 two. Yeah? Two, two. Two, 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 two. Hang on.
He doesn't as mute as when that.
Two, 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 two. Two, two, two. You are muted, you are muted. Oh. Two, two, two. Speak. Order off. Speak. Oh. Two, 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 two. Two, two, two. Two, two, two. Two, 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 two. Two, two, two. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah?
Oh, we're not going to do it in one.
He went and pushed the light button, so he says please will you just mute us, I'm going to make sure.
Yeah, we're just taking for that for...
Oh, mushy.
If they didn't... Well, I thought that's how they...
Just mute. Just mute it when you're done, eh?
Yeah. We have told them that if we do it in one, it will... Yeah, but now if we keep it in one, then something else.
Check, check. Check, two. Yeah, one, two. Two, two.
It's supposed to be...
Supposed to be off. Two. Two. Mic checked, eh? Two, one, two. Checked, eh? It was too loud. Yeah, yeah? Yeah, Zeni? Golo. Two, one, two, two. Two. One, two, two, two. Two.
He just sent you the PowerPoint, I know email. The PowerPoint. Maybe.
Yeah, you are not. You are. Same. Oh. Is that? Sure. Sure, boss.
Yeah, I can't see. Come back to you.
Asher, okay? Okay. Okay. Let's find someone.
Refast. Yako Olokrin, Edzit, Mole, Koning, Young Mole. Yeah.
I talk. Can I order more? It's like a jack. Okay, mash. Mash, I need to rub it. It's a chee.
Eh, dumela ngamukagale na. Absheni. Enda. Eh, good morning and hoi yemore. Awah, realeboga. Kiri, reskera dula, rasa lewuch or remokai. Reatoma wana biyali. We are just about to start. Eh, before that, ki yemejiwa department. Kwewa department, ukarua round, kha fitha fela, then we start. So, that's the person I'm waiting for. And I think it's not gonna be long. Restart, rokhonu gokwa. Wornali ring. Because, Rena mu, pretlejogotieja. Why here to listen to you? Maraba department, batala fitha, waraba, they take it through the entire biel. So... Eh... Yeah, kaba fitha reatoma, kie bikinakor ki lithalo sejeona. Eh, kellebo. Yeah, eh, ki wulechikare, rosiruekai. We are starting with our meeting. But before, kile amurela, ki outlinea the agenda. Wunali a process that we are really using. Where I have to open. Ka ora, kerejoali from the legislature. Kerejoali legislature, we have to declare this precinct. As a legislature present. So, allow me to declare. And declare this present. Before kile amurela, kabutseri dia the introduction. Eh, keta dithalosa, libicho laka, kimpapa, kanyani. I'm the acting chairperson. Ya Economic Development. Environment. Agriculture. And Rural Development Portfolio Committee. Of the Routing Provincial Legislature. Now, I'm declaring. This year's Tarras Civic Centre in Tuan. As the precinct of the Routing Provincial Legislature. That is in terms of Rule 56.1 and 2. Of the standing rules of the Routing Provincial Legislature. That, the standing rule of the legislature. Will apply and govern all engagements of our day-to-day. Ka onamanchu awu, iriki tyesu bakase. Ki lebore, otlakale na soeli. And then again, ki lebore, kelo khonu gofitha kanaku. Ki atsepa, lokhonnu gokiriya the breakfast. Karatsiba, wunali ba thoba golu. Baba sanyekonu gudula na kuiteli, basa ixi maleen. Now, eh, programiarna itama yeso. First, ki wana open yeki diriling. The second one, it will be apologies. Kelo rokhonali di apology. And then, from there. Then, keta introducea by department, bawo namu. And after introducing them. Then, I will also... Eh, ex-nubai introducea. Then, I will make sure. That libabaling on the visual platform, lewona kiaba introducea. Then, ki wulelaka visual platform, wunali members, jedi lokiling in. Let's add one more screening, kiki ba introducea. But that's well in. And then, from there, we get to the department. Department ya udira the presentation. So, you look, akirabana lokhono loka into the presentation, le downloadile, le wadiile. But, still on that one. Rasa tolithalo sejeo anapiile. Or when you come and engage with it, already we've really explained it to you. So, as explained in terms of the papers. Rena, we're here to listen. Kilena, by lungori, you are more important. We'll just note everything that you are saying. Lokhono contributor to the biel. Ka onamanchu awu, let me thank you. And then, kisata ka u introducea. Ba kinalibona, kamukagabona. In the, in the, in the, in the, in the visual platform. In the, in the, in the, in the, in the visual platform. And kitla, babicha 1.1. Kamhobalenka wana. And then when I introduce. Eh, a member. Then the member utla lidumedisha. Because for now, I see I've got. Two members. Who are on the visual platform. And I think they hear me. Kina kwa otoma ka, our last born in the legislature. Rena li, baba swa kamala legislature. And ki wana ba lidang, ki wana ba tamaishang, most of the things. So I've got Honorable Fasia Hassan. Can Fasia greet our audience today? Yeah, you are not really audible. I don't know what's wrong with our technicians there. I've now allowed our member to greet their audience. He's talking but the, the sound, what must I do? Can I put it on my phone? Because my phone eh, it's eh, it's eh, it's, it's on. So that we can hear. Oh ya. Eh, Honorable Hassan, can you do it again?
Uh, thanks, thanks Chair. Am I audible now?
They can hear you well, but ja, 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 just continue, they hear you.
Just wanted to greet our community members in Yesterus. And to say thank you for them being there. You're not gonna hear a lot from us. We are here to listen today.
Thank you very much. Eh, erike fe, Honorable Ina Selirs. Eh, Honorable Ina.
Good morning Chairperson and good morning community of Yesterus. Yes, we're very happy to be with you today. We're not going to talk much as my colleague said. I look forward to all your inputs on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Eh, I take it we really heard what they were saying. But I know the technicians, they were just working on it. But obviously, they're not going to say much. Because this is your platform, it's not theirs. But I'm not alone, I'm with the department. Ki aufan tate mashaa, ibena ah, tintojusa molenaa. And eh, hello, wunali ba chleni wana, you'll also do that.
Okay. Eh, tawela, good morning. Eh, Nagi Matupani Mashaa. I'm from the Routing Department of Economic Development. So eh, yeah, I'm part of the team that. Is working with legislature on this very important piece of legislation. And also some of our colleagues will join eventually as well, but yeah. Um, uh, yeah, today I'm, I think I'm alone in this, in this hall physically. But eh, yeah, thank you.
Eh, raleboga. Now, eh, Lena, when you, you raise up your hand. When you speak, you will introduce yourself. Kela relefana kwa yako bucha dibuchishu. Utlarabucha rukuena mang, uchoa ulimukai, then wa buchisha the, the question. So that's how you'll be introducing yourself. But the other part, balifile di, di earphone. Eh, but not all of you, baba tla bimba diniaka. Akirunali ba bang, like eh, they can't speak all these languages. Oblela sizzulu, o, o rublela, eh. We, we speak all the languages. But now, the earphones, they'll give them to you now. Those who wanted them, they'll raise up their hands. But the earphone, what it does, because largely we'll be doing things in English here. Now, hold through the earphone. Yako translator, kala language yuena wenyaka. So hold through the earphone. Kela uniaka ukuaka English. Wanamu earphone yala opresa 1. Lis kela lebala kira. Oopresa 1 ki English. Oopresa 2 ki Africans. So if you want to listen in Africans, you'll press 2. There's the translator, utlaba aiwiaka Africans. And then, uniaka ukuaka sizzutuka s'wana, opresa 4. I'm sorry, kitzela tari ne. Sizzutu s'wana, opresa 4. But really, sizzulu. Isin debele, sizzulu, and isin debele. Opresa 3. Lis kosa, opresa 3. Sipedi s'wana, sizzutu, opresa 4. Then uniaka shivenda, shichonga, sizzonga, opresa 5. So kita dibala very quickly. English 1, Africans 2. Sipedi s'wana s'utu 4. Sizzulu, isin debele, s'kosa is 3. Then shi, shivenda, eh, shichonga is 5. So eh, litlamisha matso, baba wana ba tla tla balifa de. Where are those people? Where, yeah, ki balibakum raune. So, kwa wemshi litsoko, then ba tla tla bago fa. But these things, lidusha beka kira after the meeting. And there are not so many. Hello, you are versatile with languages. There's no need to, ubiyali di, di, di earphone, nikati sebe. So, that, that, that's what it is. So ba tla lefata wana, then you'll move that way. Now, the other. Issue I think that I have to say. Is that, I'm now going to hand over to the department. Eh, kintate mashaa. Ntate mashaa, yeah. Eh, maybe before nta tate mashaa, ah, atoma. Ki thulefa Honorable Mnubi. Eh, ki wana fitha, but obanti, ah, ali on his, on a way. Like ki, bek indicator. But I'm going to give a platform, I know she's still a way to settle up. Eh, already, we're getting into the presentation. Mar, kina kwa ora ali, ali dumedishi. Eh, she has to greet you, and then we will be starting with our meeting.
Hoiye more. Abshen. Dumelang. Samanani. Ikamalami, ngingopinki waka Mnube. Ki member ya le comitile. Sila pa wakuti siniso, kutini tini ngalepili. Eh, ebiso wakuti township economy. Yini sginga zenu, ni funaani ni. Isinto, isin, eh, enibanasone problem. Eh, umani kuba ama business swenu. Emaloxin. Thank you.
Eh, raleboga, Minuvi. And I know others are still raising their hands to get the, the earphones. But the other part, I gathered, asla chubalefa, this bill. Now, if you feel the bill, they are distributing from the back. Everybody must have this bill. So, how I distribute? Mar, we're not going to wait. The department will start explaining. Or what do you think? Yeah, the department will start explaining while quickly. They're making sure that you have the bills with you. I know others ba honuwa iswaraba downloadile, the way they've done it. But eh, that's eh, tha, 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 that's important. I'm handing over to the, the department. And then, we really move in that particular order.
Eh, thank you Honorable Chairperson, eh, and Honorable Mnubi. Eh, as mentioned, my name is Matupani Mashaa. So I'm going to be taking you through this bill. Explaining some of the important things in this bill. So I'll try and spend a bit of time on some sections. And rush in some other sections, but um. Once you've got the document, eh, we, we can follow each other eh, as we, as we present. And I think the team at the back will, will sort of load the, the presentation on the, on the screen. So that we can be on the same page. Eh, but just to say that, eh, as you know, eh, most of you sitting here. That the Routing Government introduced the Township Economy Revitalisation Programme. In 2015. You recall that we had a lot of engagements, where we went to communities and so forth. And following that period, we, as a province, we then started implementing eh, the strategy. Eh, but as you know, a, a strategy is something that eh, as good as it is, but um. Sometimes it may lack eh, instruments to enforce it. Um, and therefore, in 2019. You recall that the premier introduced the, eh, this, this, this very important process. Basically saying that um, Routing Government will introduce the Township Economic Development Bill. Eh, as an instrument that will help us eh, fast-track implementation of eh, programmes in the township. So basically, what it will do is to give us legislative instruments, legal instruments. To enforce implementation. So it's one thing to have a strategy. But it's a bit different when it's law. Because, and as we get into this, we'll explain. That this bill, once it's passed into law. It is binding on all organs of state. Municipalities, eh, so is in the province, eh, all departments, basically. So, so that gives us a bit of an leverage and advantage. In terms of eh, implementation, because now, as they always say. Oga, outside ngamutu, because this thing is law. Eh, it's, that's very important. So just to, eh, in terms of the, the presentation. I just thought I should just preface the, my introduction that way. Um, on the second slide, you'll see that we've got eh, obviously. A breakdown in terms of overview of the presentation, eh, the chapters. So, so the preamble, it will be the preamble, the definitions, the intent of the bill. Chapters in the bill, definitions. These definitions are very important. Eh, I'll also occasionally refer to this document so that you can see where, where we are. Um, and, and we'll, we'll run it that way. So, so just, just to preface our, our discussion or the, the introduction is that. If you go into the, the, the pa, the page, page 5 of the bill, you realize that it introduces.
Yeah, can, where, where is this copies? I think eh, it's delaying. Can you start in front with the copies? If there are very few, tell them to share. So that we, we, we really move faster, because I can see. Yeah, if you, you start in front, and then you make them share if ever your copies are very few. So that we, we don't really eh, take time about the copies. Ke, ke, can we pause a minute so that you can finish this? Because you'll be referring to pages, and then you don't have the. The, 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 the bill with you. There are also people at the top there, we should not forget them. Yeah, while they are busy with others, making some copies, oh, there they are. Let's continue, then we'll be referring to pages.
All right, I think eh, the guys that are helping me at the back, let's go back to the preamble. On the slides. Yeah, thank you. Um, so, if you look at the, the document, eh, and you go to chapter 5 of the, of the actual document. It basically eh, provides a preamble to, to this very important eh, legislation. So I'll just read couple of these eh, eh, preambles. One is that, whereas section 9 of the constitution. Guarantees the right of everyone to equal protection and benefit of the law. And empowers the state to undertake legislative and other measures. Designed to promote the achievement of equality by protecting. And advancing persons or categories of persons disadvantaged by unfair discrimination. So this is very important, ne? Eh, so when we talk later about how the bill is designed. Eh, what are the instruments that are going to be used? Don't forget some of these things, because they then eh, preface what we'll be discussing later. Eh, and also because in our country, our constitution is our supreme law. So meaning that every piece of legislation that you develop cannot contradict our constitution. So it must be consistent with our constitution. And then also, the, the other one is that whereas section 22 of the constitution. Guarantees the right of every citizen to choose his or her trade. Occupation or profession freely. And em, and empowers the state to regulate the, the practice of trade, occupation and profession by law. So what this means is that eh, as, as individuals who are free to choose. What you can do in terms of business. So long as it's, it's within the law. But, it also gives the state the right to regulate practices in those areas. So, so that is very important. Eh, you've got the right. Eh, but the state also has the right to regulate eh, some of the activities. Eh, in it, so that to make sure that, for example, there is no abuse or, and, and so forth, and so forth. So that is very important. And then, Routing Provincial Government also recognizes that. A significant and a meaningful intrusion of the people of the township. Into the mainstream economy of the province through their own enterprises. That are supported by government. And big business will transform the economy.
Yeah, let's, let's have order, there are people are making noise there. The, the papers can't cover everybody. So we indicated, let's share. So let's not eh, and then let's be quiet and listen. And then you'll try to be very slow, and then explain the bill, and eh, very slowly. Okay, let's. Can we really be quiet? Yeah, there is a hand there, yes eh. I'm just allowing that hand, I don't have 2. But I left 2, because I'm not sure whether it's based on the, the bill that you are distributing. And it's like, you don't have a mic, there's a mic there.
Thank you. Thank you, eh, program director. Um, I just want to comment on what you've just mentioned about section 9 of the constitution that.
Eh, no, no, not now.
That guarantees.
No, no, not, sorry. Order, not now.
Access. Sir, you have arranged this meeting and you have not allowed everybody actual access to this meeting. You're hosting this meeting.
I'm saying, I'm saying you are not going to do it now.
The community.
Will, will take you out if you hear that, that's what you're saying.
I am the ward councillor of this area which where you are hosting your event.
No, you are the councillor, I can recall by name.
Informed us as you are.
We don't have to inform you.
You have to inform the community. You have not done so.
You are here like anybody, we don't have to call you. So you must understand, you sit down.
The community.
Whether you are a councillor or not.
Other community, you have not done so to this community.
It doesn't have an issue. Ki, can you take the mic, we proceed, we'll give you time. After they've explained, we'll give you the platform. Well, we'll explain that, we'll explain it after the presentation, yes.
All, all right, um, I think, so, on, on the preamble, um, I was just, I think, the last point. That Routing Provincial Government recognizes that. As a significant participation and meaningful inclusion of the people of township. In the mainstream economy of the province through their own enterprises. That are supported by the government and big business will transform the economy. that are supported by the government and big business will transform the economy. So there is therefore, from the provincial government, a recognition that a majority of people in our province live in the townships, and for us to be able to make sure that there is meaningful participation and inclusion into a mainstream economy, hence the introduction of this very important piece of legislation. And in terms of the intent of the bill, is that the bill seeks to provide for the promotion and the development of the township economy, and to create a conducive environment for the attainment of that purpose, but also to provide for the licensing of township-based enterprise, also to provide for the management of the fund through the Township Economic Development Fund, and also to provide for the principles to be adopted by municipalities in the drafting and adopting of bylaws. Those are very important sort of overview in terms of what the bill intends to do. And we can move to the next page. And I think if you then refer to the bill on page six, on page six, eh? Page six, it will be just a breakdown of the chapters. And basically, these are the chapters that we'll be going, we'll sort of go through as we discuss the bill. And, yeah. And then we can skip to chapter, I mean, to page, to page eight, on the definitions. And there are many definitions here, but I will not necessarily go through all of them. As you can see, I think I have just picked some few of the definitions for the purposes of this presentation today. But you can also refer to some of those definitions on these pages, on page eight and nine. One is that we look at the definition of enterprise in the context of this legislation. One is that an enterprise is an undertaking or a business concern, whether formal or informal, which is engaged in the production of goods or provision of services, and it includes an entrepreneur, and a small enterprise, and a small enterprise organization, and a cooperative. So, one of them, we've included, they've been included, because when we started initially, there was a concern that there was no cooperative in the definition, for example. So there is a cooperative that is included now in the definition as a form of an enterprise as well. And then, an entrepreneur also means a person who starts and operates a business, on the same, on the definitions, who starts and operates a business. So an entrepreneur also means a person who starts and operates a business, or both, which includes identifying opportunities in the markets, taking risks as you have been rewarded with profit. So that is the definition of entrepreneur in this context. And then we also look at, if you go to page nine of the document, it says small enterprise definition, which basically means a separate and a distinct business entity, which has branches, or together with its branches and subsidiaries, if any, including a cooperative enterprise managed by one owner, predominantly carried in any sector or subsector of the economy, as mentioned in sheet one, and classified as a micro, small or medium enterprise by satisfying the criteria as mentioned in this document. So that is very important as well, because later on, when we discuss other sort of programs and so forth, just have that in mind, that when we talk about a small enterprise, at least in the context of this document, that will be the definition that we'll be sort of referencing. And then if we go to page, no, on page nine, on small enterprise organization, I think on the slides is the second page, it talks to a small enterprise organization, which means an entity, whether or not incorporated or registered under any law, consisting mainly of persons carrying on a small business concern in any economic sector, established for the purposes of promoting the interest of or representing small enterprise concerns, including any federation consisting wholly or partly of such association, and any branch of such organization. So this is also a very important definition. And then if you also look at, on the actual document, you go to page ten, on top there, the definitions, it talks about the township, which means, and I'll just run through the township. It means an area contemplated in section six, we'll still come to section six later, which includes an urban, peri-urban and rural area, which... So this is very important, let me repeat it again. A township means an area contemplated in section six, which includes an urban, peri-urban or rural living area, which at any given time from the late nineteenth century up to twenty-seven April 1994 was reserved for black people. So that's the first part of the definition. So it includes an area that before 1994 was reserved for black people. Secondly, it also refers to an area that has been developed for historically disadvantaged persons after 1994. So we know that there are townships that have been established after 1994, some starting as informal settlements but being formalized and so forth and so forth. So this definition will then incorporate some of these areas as well. And my guys at the back, please go back to the definitions, please? Yes, on this slide. And then if you look at the township-based enterprise, remember, later on, when we talk about, when we discuss, we will learn what is a township. Here's a definition of a township, that will be sort of, as we discuss. But then when you talk about an enterprise that is from the township, what are we then referring to? As per this definition, it says then, on page, on the same page, page ten, that a township-based enterprise, it means a small enterprise, small enterprise organization, and a cooperative, which is based or situated in a township, designated in terms of section six, which includes a small enterprise organization. So that emphasis is very important as well. Because when we talk about, well, who then benefits from whatever it is that this bill wants to achieve? It is then an enterprise that is from a township, as per the definition that we have just given, that it is an area that was developed before 1994 for historically disadvantaged persons, but also an area that was developed after 1994, also for historically disadvantaged. So those definitions are very important in the context of what we are discussing here today. And of course, I did not, other definitions that we have here are the normal standard ones that we know, like people living with disabilities, we know in terms of, in our country, we've got already that definition, and so forth and so forth. I didn't get into some of those definitions as well. And then, I'll also spend a bit of time on this section around the guiding principles, because any piece of legislation must also have what you call principles that guide them. And those are very important. So the previous slide, so in terms of the guiding principles, one is that this act, once it's approved into an act, seeks to facilitate and promote inclusive growth along a transformative paradigm in order to build a cohesive and more equal society, which is underpinned by a growing and inclusive economy. So those are very important ones. So we've got, so it must facilitate and promote inclusive growth, eh? But this inclusive growth must also be transformative. It means as the economy grows, must also be transformed... Yeah, okay. So this economy, the guiding principle is that it must be inclusive, this growth, but also it must be transformative. So it means as the economy grows, it must be inclusive, but it must be transformative as well. But also, which is underpinned by a growing and inclusive economy, which harnesses the potential of all in the republic, but also diversify the ownership patterns in the economy. And you know much better than me that there are sectors in our economy that are still not transformed. But also, if you look at the ownership patterns, they still reflect a historical past. So this bill basically says that there has to be, the economy must grow. As it grows, it must be inclusive, it must be transformative, but it must also diversify the ownership patterns in this economy. And meaning that, if you look at the definitions earlier, for example, diversifying ownership patterns means that youth, for example, women, people with disabilities, and different groupings in our society must also be included in this growing economy that is transformed and diversified. I hope that one is clear. And then, go back to the previous slide, please. But it also facilitates easy access by new entrance into all sectors of the economy. As you know, this is quite important. It's not easy to enter certain sectors of our economy, because the requirements, compliance requirements are so high, that it is almost impossible to enter if you are a new player in that space. And there are many, including in the pharmaceutical space, I'm sure there are very few people who will come to mind in our townships that are in the pharmaceutical space, that are manufacturing drugs, pills, rather legal ones. I got drugs, rather legal ones. That are manufacturing medicine in our township, drugs, pills and whatever, that are being used somewhere in the market, there are very few, eh? Because if you go into that space and you study it, you'll realize that for you to even obtain license to do certain things, it takes forever. You know, so those are some of the things that are referenced. So there has to be easy access in all sectors of our economy, meaning that government must take a leading support in making sure that they support the entry of these new SMMEs or enterprises in our economy. Next slide, please. But also, while these interventions are transformative and so forth, they must also make sure that we focus on sectors where there is rapid growth, or sectors that have a high employment absorption rate. As you know, in our economy, we've got high unemployment rate, and mostly, young people are at the receiving end of this unemployment, but also women in general are also at the receiving end of this unemployment. So what it is saying is that as this economy grows, as it transforms, some of the guiding principles will be that they must be focused on sectors that will help us create jobs at a faster rate, for example. But also it must be driven by ethos of transformation, modernization and reindustrialization. Also must be structured to include socially vulnerable groups in our society, so that they've got access to these economic opportunities. And this is very important, because in most instances, when we've got big projects, the inclusion of people with disabilities, for example, it becomes an afterthought. So we're saying that must change. So the design of our projects and programs must also be designed with our vulnerable groups in society in mind as well. So that they can easily participate in those opportunities actually as well. And then it must also include bias towards strengthening the productive capacity of the township economy. It means then that also that, we must also focus on supporting businesses that will produce and add value, value addition or benefication. Guys that are now growing more ringa in the township, processing it into different products, or guys that are growing cannabies and processing into different products as well. By the way, cannabis is now legal, I guess. It's also legal, so it's a new sector that has a lot of opportunities as well, as an example. So what is the principle is that, in all the programs that we are doing, they must be guided by these principles. It must be, whatever we're doing must be transformative, it must be inclusive, it must make sure it targets vulnerable groups in society, it must make sure that we target sectors that can help us create jobs faster, it must make sure that we focus on sectors where we can enhance the productive capacity of the township economy as well. So those are the guiding principles in terms of this document as well. So meaning that, when you engage a document, anything that you look at, when you go to the sections that talks about programs, you must then say, ask yourself whether, is this program transformative? Is it helping us to enhance our productive capacity in the township? And so forth and so forth, in terms of this section, the guiding principles in this section, as I mentioned. And then also, it must make sure that we promote productive activities and value addition designed to prevent and eradicate fronting practices. We know that we do have issues with fronting in our economy as well. So that is something that is also flagged as a problem here. But it also, there's a need to extract maximum economic value from our investment in infrastructure. It's the next slide, IT guys at the back, can go to the next slide. And then also, if you look at number G on page eleven, it says that there's also need to implement the context of effective solution-driven monitoring and evaluation system. It means that we must also have a system to monitor and evaluate impact of this thing on an ongoing basis. So there are different, of course, practices around how you can design and monitoring and evaluation, but what we want to do is that everything that is done here must be accounted for in terms of impact. So meaning that there has to be systems in place to monitor and track everything that is done. So that is very important. And I know, I think in the last two years or so, many people have adopted the theory of change as an M and E instrument in terms of, you know, making sure that as we implement, you also move towards achieving your objectives as well. But there are many, many other instruments which can be put in place to make sure that we monitor and evaluate impact in everything that we do. So the next slide, I think on page, also on page eleven of the actual document, it looks at the object of the bill. If you look at the object of the bill, number A, isn't the previous slide? It says this bill... Can you go to the previous slide, the object of the bill? Previous slide, not next, previous? Back again? Yeah. So the object of the bill is to provide a regulatory framework which makes it possible for people living in the townships to establish viable and thriving businesses, enterprises, small enterprises, small enterprise organizations, and cooperatives where they live. So that's the core mechanism of this bill. So my game is to join a core, it might be easier for, but why don't go, 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 guys? To establish businesses where they live. And that is very important, because you know that our townships were not designed with this in mind. It's difficult to even, I think other townships like Yamamelodi, maybe Hesteras and other, are unique in a sense that they are close to your factories and industry. But not all our townships are designed that way. So townships were far from economic opportunities. So for you to go to work, if you are in Yamamelodi, you can even just walk to Adlu, go to work there, like walk. But you can't in other townships. If you are in Soweto, for example, to go to work, you must catch a taxi and so forth and so forth. So basically what this bill says is that, in terms of, is that it must be easy for people in the township to start businesses, operate them successfully, where they live. Not, of course, if you want to go to other areas, it should be a choice, but they need to be able to operate businesses where they live. So that's a very important one. And remember what the definitions that we had earlier? So every time we talk about a township, remember the definition. Every time we talk about a business and enterprise, remember the definition we had earlier, so that we are on the same page. And the second one is that it must introduce an enabling framework to ensure that retail malls and supermarkets that are township-based partner with local-based enterprises, including the sourcing of some of the products and services from township-based producers, service providers and manufacturers. So also very important provision. And we can give you a lot of examples, lots of examples around... So on one hand, you've got a big retailer coming into a township, big retailer, they set up there, and then they displace local businesses that have been established for a while. Like if you've got a... Like if you've got a spazza shop, Coca-C, and then suddenly there is a big, a big store next to you eh instead of selling bread, eh, so they they can, basically, if they want to kick you out of the market, they can do that for twelve months without them feeling the pinch, but we're not, because if you are selling, for example, a fish of tin, got rrrr and sabah, I got two fifty. For twelve months, you'll be in trouble, obviously. So so what this eh bill is, it's a very important object. This is that they, we must ensure that eh these big retailers eh can start doing certain things. I agree by law, they can't be, they can't be prevented from setting up in the township, but they can enable township products, for example, on their shelves. If you go to, let me not mention names, this thing is live. If you go to to a lot of our, if you go to to some of our bigger, our bigger. Okay. Thanks. Yeah, so if 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 you go to some of our bigger retailers in our townships, chances are you will not find a local product there. Eh, you you won't find eh, a much lower pins or eh, what, what? As an example, just as an example. So what this bill is saying is that where there are big retailers in the township, their value chains must reflect the productive capacity of that area, eh, which is very important. So it it introduces that as a, as a, as an instrument in this bill um in in this and and think including sourcing from township-based enterprises. Eh, and we'll come later to some of the strategies because as you know, eh, when they talk about sourcing from you eh, and if if we go to them now and say, can you start buying one item from us? They'll say, yeah, no, we can buy it, it's fine, as long as it's certified. But can you give us three million of these things by tomorrow? Obviously, they don't have the capacity to do that. So it means that we need to be able to be much more organized eh in terms of some of these areas. So if you are going to access some of these eh eh value chain opportunities and be able to sup- to provide some of these goods, we must be organized. Otherwise eh, they'll come and say, I know, give us twelve million loaves of bread every Monday morning or every morning four o'clock every day. Eh, it's a it's a different story altogether. So those will just be an example. I mean, it applies to many products. So I'm just giving example around bread or beans and so forth, not eh and 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 there. But the the second one on on and is is that you need to establish specific procurement rules and programmatic support that allows government and its main contractors to buy from large groups of township-based enterprises, which is very important, that talks to that organization. Eh, so for example, eh, if somebody is going to build something and they need three million eh bricks to build that eh facility, um, alone, if you don't have that capacity, you will not be able to provide. But as a group, you can provide, as an example. So what it says here is that eh eh, government must also through procurement start buying from a cluster of enterprises, from a group of enterprises, not necessarily one person, because we know that if if we talk about township and our capacity in the township, we may not be able to reach eh anybody if we are, we are insisting on buying from eh that that those individual based eh own businesses. And then secondly, also compel enterprises that obtains contracts from government to also avail certain percentage of procurement on township where they are doing um that that, let's say if it's if it's a construction of road or whatever. Um, what it does is that it introduces the law that says you need to be able to localize those opportunities, both in terms of job creation but also in terms of SMMEs in that in that sector, in that area where you're doing whatever you're doing. So so which is very important because we know, we know historically eh, there will be situation where somebody gets a contract to build a school and they just bring people from my hood. Eh, you just see people rocking up and you don't even know who they are. So what it then does this one is that at least it it compels even those guys that are partnering with government to localize those opportunities, meaning that eh they can only go outside, for example, if they can't find eh capacity in those areas as well. So as an example. So that is a very important provision eh because it it helps us to avoid eh back and forth stopping of projects and so forth. And then number D is that it also provides an enabling environment eh for municipalities to develop tax ranks into micro-business districts eh and to also support the tax economy eh so that they can grow and then support the value chains and industries as well. But also develop, that support the development and promotion of township-based real estate development where we convert areas with high commercial densities into township high streets. And the example here is, for example, in in Houghton, we've got about four million people living in what you call backyard rooms. But that market is not formally recognized by the financial institutions and so forth. So what we're saying is that municipalities must enable eh people in the township, especially where you've got a high, higher commercial densities, to be able to, for example, eh build, instead of just having drr, drr rooms in your back, you can then build and go up a bit, as an example. Eh, we've tried and piloted this in other areas. Eh, it's not easy in terms of zoning, that's why we are putting it in this, in legislation, in in law so that eh we, it gives us instruments to be able to actually eh eh fast track the implementation. Eh, so obviously because municipalities have a role to play here in areas where you need to be able to build eh, build up. If it's a certain number of units, for example, municipalities may come and say, but we don't have eh sufficient parking infrastructure to carry new people or new units, that's an example. So it's a very important eh instrument which we think eh will create jobs, but not only that, it it also has the potential to to sort of increase in eh income of households in the township. Because instead of earning, for example, rental from four, let's say drr rooms at the back, you can then go to between eight to eighteen. I think the the largest one that we've done is about twenty-six rooms, eh depending on space, of course, eh in those areas as well. So so it's a, it's a very important eh, you know, innovation in terms of how, because if you look at a township in terms of how it was designed, eh, it means then we need to have solutions that are suitable for that environment eh as well. But also to to promote and support eh the development of representative associations of township-based enterprises and nonprofit organization. So this is very important because eh we, you know our history with um, in our country, our history around business forums, business chambers and so forth. It has not necessarily been a positive one, especially in terms, if you look at the, your large-scale government projects. So what we're saying is that it has, that can, can't be changed, it should be changed. Business forums in the townships should be partners to development, not what we're seeing at the moment. Eh, and 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 I think um, we've also received a lot of proposals around around this area as we were going around 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 the province. But but everybody acknowledges that the relationship between business forums and government in relation to projects must be eh normalized eh so that eh we avoid delays. In twenty nineteen, for example, South Africa lost eh, I can't remember if it was seventeen billion or so in investments because of delays of projects. So so and we're not saying that the business forums don't have a legitimate case. No, 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 they're in in some instances, their 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 issues are legitimate. Eh, and I think that's why we're saying that the relationship between government and business forums must be, must be normalized so that it is a positive one. It is developmental, it is helping the community. Because when we lose so much money in in investment potential, we are still suffering also as a, as a community as well. So we need to be able to meet each other halfway and say, as business forums in the township and your government, how do we work together so that eh we can do certain things together eh and and so forth? So so we think that is a very important provision as we are in Houghton because a lot of these happens in Houghton and and affects us the most as a province. And I think eh, if we look at eh page. Okay, so I think I've already covered this one, this this section. So so I thought I should just spend a bit of time on this, on the object of the bill, because it's very important in terms of what this thing intends to achieve and so forth and so forth. So we made reference to government partnering with with big business to do certain things. We made reference to township retail malls and supermarkets allowing their value chains, opening them up for township eh products. Eh, we we made reference to municipalities eh providing flexible zoning rights where, for example, people in the township want to build eh the backyard into, you know, solid businesses as well. So those are some of the, some of the critical things that we want to achieve eh through this, through this bill. Eh, yeah, so I thought I should just spend a bit of time there eh so that eh when we get into the other areas, we we are on the same page around the definitions, the guiding principles, or objects of the bill as well. And as I mentioned earlier, earlier eh eh in my introduction is that this this bill, or once it becomes an act, it will apply to every organ of state, subject, su- su- subject to section thirty-nine, every municipality within the province. So so it is, it is a provincial act. It is not an act that is only limited to economic development. Eh, the reason why we are leading it as economic development and 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 um the portfolio committee on economic development, because the impact would be much more economic. But it is a provincial eh piece of legislation. And then eh, if I just call your attention to, on on the same page, page twelve, eh, if you look at the the last part of this application of the act, number two, I think it's on the screen as well, is that in the event that there's a conflict between this act or any other law that is enforced which regulates township economic development or township-based enterprises in the province, this piece of legislation will prevail. So so basically, this this act has a triumphing clause eh because we know, I mean, we've seen it eh in our attempt to implement programs, especially where you are, you find that we, we have a problem with the PFMA in terms of enabling us to do certain things, as an example. So what this, in anticipation that eh every now and then we'll 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 get to that point where somebody will come and say, as eh maybe big business or whoever, we must also give us this opportunity in the township because by law, per the constitution, eh eh, I mean, they can always argue those those things. So we need to be able to refer to this clause and say, but we agree. But in terms of the development of township economy, eh clause two gives this act eh a triumphing clause in terms of making sure that we advance the interest of eh enterprises in the township. And then chapter two on the same page, page twelve, talks about designation of townships. So here basically, it just say that the member executive, the responsible member executive, M E C in this case, may declare geographic area on areas of township for the purposes of achieving the objectives of this act eh as well. Eh, so so because as you know, I agree with society, they're changing. So our definition talks to areas established before nineteen ninety-four and after nineteen ninety-four, but but we may not know in the future if there will be other areas established that where we may still need to make sure that we, you know, eh im- implement some of the programs that we have in this. But what it does, it gives the M E C the 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 right to declare, to declare an area township as per eh the sections as eh cited here. And then on page thirteen of the actual document, it just talks about the licensing of township-based enterprises. So I'll try and and pick up the pace eh so that we can spend a bit more time discussing than me talking here. So here it talks about licensing of township-based enterprises um that obviously um so so eh, enterprises and townships will have to sort of, it a great, a great says, certain things must be eased for people to be able to comply or at least people be able to obtain eh eh trading permits and so forth. So if you look at eh number two, for example, it says that before the granting or issuing of such a, of a license from a relevant licensing authority, a provincial organ of state with regard to township-based enterprises, formal-based enterprises, provided that a certified copy of received or formal confirmation issued by relevant licensing authority of an application is produced, eh sufficient eh evidence. So so these sections basically, in in this section around licensing, just few things. One is that it says that, if you look at the second, the second point, that a license can also include a written or a digital license, eh registration, approval, recognition, permission, consent, certificate, exemption by other authorities and so forth. So 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 there are many ways then that you can be able to be granted to, permission to to, for example, to trade. But also number, if you look at the number eight, talks about the display of licensing. Eh, that eh, once in a license, as you can see, when you go to to restaurants, there's a license eh always displayed next to a tea or somewhere there. So so it talks about those things around displaying with respect to premises, because not all businesses will have similar operation in terms of premises, but that license must be displayed for that purpose as well. Or you can provide a digital proof of the existence of the, of your license. Eh, so that is very important because as you know, we are living in in the four IR eh and and we need to be able to embrace that. And and I think during during the hard lockdown, the province tried testing with your digital informal trading permits for a period of time, eh, which worked, sometimes there were challenges and, but it it just shows that it's it's an area that we can sort of, once we have time to develop, eh, we can be able to provide digital licensing. And that license, for example, was, or the permit, is geolocated. So if you have a business in a certain area, it basically gives you the right to trade in that area. When you move, it changes eh the status on the, eh the status, as an example. So so there are many ways you can basically eh be able to 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 enable people to actually do that as well. But also it's it's it will be easy also to check who is actually trading in the township, in real terms. And and then chapter four on page fourteen talks about the promotion and development of township eh enterprises. There basically, this section just affirms, it affirms the responsibility of government in terms of making sure that the developed programs that support township-based enterprises. What it means is that once this thing is passed into an act and whenever you feel or, for example, government is not necessarily owning up to the provisions of some of this, actually, you can go to, you can go to the M E C responsible and say, M E C, in terms of this piece of legislation, you are supposed to develop programs that eh eh empower township-based enterprises. You're supposed to make sure that I can access information and data to be able to run my business efficiently. Eh, you must also make sure that eh you provide marketing services for some of the products that are eh produced or at least in the township and so forth and so forth. So it prov- it affirms government responsibility in terms of providing support to township-based enterprises. And that is very important because in some of these areas, it is specific and you can be able to say, as a business, now that I've got products, I'm I'm sorted in this area, I may need to be enabled in other areas as well. And and so government has a responsibility eh to do that. So so eh, yeah, I think it's a, it's a very important eh um for me, affirmation of responsibility as far as I'm concerned. Because if you look at the other existing pieces of legislation, eh, some of them are not specific to township. It just talks about supporting enterprises and so forth, which is good, like a small business eh, some of the small business policies and so forth. But if you're going to be saying, I want to be biased towards a township-based enterprise, for us in the province of Routing, this now gives us a bit of leverage in eh in terms of making sure that we can then say, no, 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 we are in Yamamelodi and we're going to do one, two, three. We are in Estaras, we want to do one, two, three in Estaras. Eh, it gives us the legal instruments to be able to do that without eh breaking any other law eh in 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 of of the country as well. Um, and I think on this page, um. Yeah, it's basically a bit of repetition to what I've just said, that eh there must be plans and strategies to support development of township-based enterprises and so forth and so forth. So so that is very important. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a really affirmation of what government eh responsibility should be to businesses in the township. And eh, if you go to page sixteen of the documents, it talks to ben- benefits and incentives for township-based enterprises. So it says that here, a provincial organ of state may, in order to facilitate the flow of financial resources to sector township-based enterprises. So this statement is very important. I remember earlier we were saying that economic development is led by by the Department of Economic Development, but it is everybody's responsibility in many respects. For example, um, an economic activity in the housing space, um, an economic activity in the housing space eh is still an economic opportunity for a a a business. So what this section does is that it gives a responsibility to all organs of state in the province or provincial organs of state to make sure that as the budget, as you can see here, here, in order to facilitate the flow of financial resources to sector-based, meaning that if it's a transport-based business or if it's a transport-based opportunity, is a sector-based opportunity as an example. And they, they must say that in, either on his own or in cooperation with with the other small eh enterprise development agencies, must identify sector-based enterprises and projects which require financial assistance. And also it must provide information on source of finance and promote local investment for township-based enterprises. Also assist sector-based eh township-based enterprises in preparation of business plans, project proposal, loan applications, with a view of ensuring that there is accessibility to financial resources. So that is also very important. But also designing and establishing But also design and establish standards for loan administration. Yeah, cut down on this section. And monitor effective use of loan funds, repayment mechanism by sector-based enterprises so as to keep misuse of financial resources. So that is very important. But also it must make sure that the, the, the secure incentives through relevant authorities to ensure that township-based enterprises are developed. So it's also very, so it just emphasizes the point I made earlier, that this is not a, 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 a legislation that applies only to economic development. It applies to all provincial organs of state or departments, entities and so forth, meaning that whether you are a department of transport or human settlements, social development and so forth and so forth. In the development of your plans, you have, you have to be able to, to also make sure that the principles that as, as, as alluded to earlier, are incorporated in your planning and how you spend your finances and so forth. And, and that is very important. I think it, it, it will help us a lot in terms of, because one of the biggest challenges that business have is not necessarily money. Yes, money is a problem, but if you've got markets, I mean, money, money will just follow you if you've got markets. So one of the biggest problems is market opportunities. And market opportunities, usually you find them, you find them go human settlements in terms of building your houses or professional services around plumbing, electrical services. You find them go transport in terms of building of roads and so forth and so forth. So if you look at all the, all the departments that we have, if you just change your perspective a bit to say, basically all of them can have the capacity to provide opportunities, business opportunities for township-based enterprises. So this is what this section is basically affirming in terms of our, our programs going forward as well. And then in terms of development of infrastructure, also it gives us the responsibility, it gives a provincial organ of state the responsibility to make sure that there is provision of suitable infrastructure for business, including websites, social amenities, business information centers, you know, model, model centers of excellence and so forth. It is really interesting, I mean, in our country, even in twenty twenty-two, that for you to register a business, you must catch a taxi and go somewhere. Or for you to update your CIDB certificate, or, or you must catch a taxi, go somewhere. Or for you to update your QUEDA, depending on what, on, on your, on your business, you must go somewhere and go and change it. So already the, it, it's a, is a constraint, because you care costs. And that's why sometimes you may find people may not be able to update some of their compliance documents, because it's costly to just, just to make sure you comply, you know? So what it says is that in, in, in areas where in the township, where we, remember earlier, the emphasis of that is that it must be easy for people to start and run viable businesses where they live. So, so that is very important. And then the second one around industrial and commercial estates. Here obviously, it talks about in instances where you've got businesses that are producing weather light manufacturing and so forth and so forth, that there has to be provision of those industrial and commercial estates in the township, so that people don't then, you find the key, eleven o'clock at night, I'm busy trying to manufacture my windows next door. I agree if I'm, if I've got a business here, here manufacturing windows and again allow order, where now you've got kids that are studying for their exam, and I'm chasing my, my contract this side, the kids must pass their exam, come on next door, I must produce this thing and, and, and supply tomorrow. Obviously somebody was going to be at a disadvantage there, you know? So what it is saying is that we need to be able to, the provincial organ of state must make sure that there's provision of those industrial and commercial estates, so that certain businesses can be done properly where they're supposed to be doing and so forth and so forth. I think that is very important. But also in terms of letting of buildings and premises also is very important. What it says is that it gives this responsibility to our department of infrastructure, that even when there are properties or buildings or whatever, those things must be list unfavorable conditions in terms to township-based enterprises. And sometimes, of course, if I'm going to run a business and I, and I need to produce whatever, I'm producing, I can go for example, yeah, cannabis, let me give a different example, we are producing juice. So if I'm producing juice, I get a building somewhere that is owned by government. Instead of being upfront and say, eh, I will not be able to pay rent for the first six months. I just accept the terms and conditions and I sign the contract, because I want, I want, and then I realize, in fact, I, I needed to, to actually start running fast a bit before I can start paying rent. But what it is saying is that those things must be on the table when you negotiate, especially for government-owned premises, that for example, maybe can I do it for three years without paying rent? Maybe I can just pay for the services, not the rent, you know, all of those things. So I think it's a, it's a very progressive proposal as well, that, that can help township-based enterprises as well. But obviously, information is power. So if you know as a business that there is this provision, then you can, you can negotiate it when you sit down and say, can I use this building? But I know that in terms of the act, can I exercise the three-year exemption period? And, and, and in exchange, I remember, what government wants you to do is to create jobs basically for, for, for people in the townships and so forth. So, so it's a very important provision as well. The, the second section on page eighteen just talks about capacity building programs. It's quite straightforward, that what we are saying also is that our training programs must be demand-led as well. We, we, we can't be trained on things that will not be used or will not be useful to growing our businesses. So, so, so imagine if somebody comes to you and say, I go for computer training, but it's, it's on, what was the first software here, Microsoft DOS, you know, DOS or something? Imagine somebody says, no, I'll training very good, but on DOS, it's not gonna help you. So, 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 so the training has to be relevant, it must be demand-driven and enable our enterprises to be able to grow. And it's very important, I mean, you can grow a business if you're not capac, I agree if you add this capacity and you want to operate at this level of a business. To plug that gap is, is either you're gonna hire people to do it for you or you're gonna train yourself to get to this level. So capacity building is very important, either you're gonna pay for it, somebody come and do it for you, or you will, you will do it, you will train yourself and increase your capacity, as an example. So that is very important. So, so, so this section basically emphasizes that point. But also, on the same page, it talks about the development of markets and provision of marketing services. So I just gave example earlier that there has to be establishing of markets for township-based products, which is very important. I mean, we know a lot of people in the township that are manufacturing stuff, whether bricks and some, some quite advanced and so forth and so forth. But markets are always an issue. And so what we're saying, this section basically, is that there has to be establishment of markets. But also there must be linkages between township-based enterprises as well in terms of the markets, because sometimes, I mean, we've seen in some, some sectors, like for example, you're in the food industry, sometimes we can be a market ourselves in the township, in some of these areas. But even between businesses, we can, we can enhance market, market opportunities among ourselves. But also if you link this part to training, if you're going to be producing some product in the township, given the, the technology that we have in our, in our country now, or in the times that we live in, a market is, the whole world is now your market. You can sell that thing to anybody around the world, if you know how to do it, for example. I mean, today if you want to buy a, a dog on, on, on take a lot, you can, they'll deliver it tomorrow, as an example. But in the morning, somebody, hey chief, here's your dog, you regular one. So I'm just saying, if you know how to do it and you are trained, you can always access bigger markets. Only in that corner, Kwanama Diva and, and Sisulu or something, you can reach greater markets with that product if you know how to do it, basically. And we've seen it, I think, even with using Facebook and so forth. But, but to be able to be a proper player, you need to be able to be capacitated to do it properly as well. So, so, so that is very important. It also talks about each around trade fairs and shows to promote township-based products. Sometimes you can, but people are doing it virtually, but some, some people like myself, who are still a bit more old-fashioned, I always need to touch this avocado. So, so these, these are platforms, marketing opportunities. In some of the townships that we went to, you may find that there is a huge open area owned by Patco that is not even working. How about people in the township, you turn that into, into your flea market for certain days where you sell your products and so forth and so forth. So as an example, you know? And, and, and what we are also saying is that people in, in, in the township, you can also be what you call a procurement aggregator, where you're saying, as, as a group of people that are growing vegetables in the township, as an example, as a group, we can be able to actually supply a hospital with vegetables every day, because we are using economies of scale and we're drawing from different small-scale gardeners around the area or vegetable growers around the area. So, so, so there are many ways you can do it. Yes, government as a market is a good opportunity, but we can also be a market ourselves in the township. And I think the food industry has proven that. And other products, I think, like issues like booty, your windows and so forth. I mean, that, that industry is booming in the township, because we are supporting it ourselves in the township. We are buying those windows in the township, you know, and so forth. Maybe the second section is just in terms of transfer and acquisition of technology. So as I said earlier, because we live in this fourth industrial, you know, revolution, we are already in it. So, so we need to make sure that we encourage innovation and development of new products, technology products in our economy, so that we can actually also open up markets and participate much better. But also be able to package incentives for guys that are in that space, that are doing, providing different solutions and, and, and have, you know, regional centers of excellence where young people can go, test their ideas, fail, get it until they get it right. If you, if you check the development of other countries like your India and so forth, a lot of their, their, their successes around some of the products, especially innovation, is because people have an opportunity to try and fail. Try, fail, try, fail, until you get it right. So, so, and we think that those are very important in our country as well. So where people should be able to test their products, take it to market. If the market rejects you, you don't disappear, you, you, you improve your product, you use technology and so forth and so forth. So that is a very important, I think, point to emphasize as well. Yeah, so I'm going to just quickly run through the, the fund as, as, and I think it's, it's got about one, two, three. Around twelve pages, so I will not, because a lot of the, the sections in the fund, in this section, it's more governance-related issues. For example, if we've got a board of this fund, they must write minutes, they must have annual reports. So some of those things are what you call governance-related. They are very important, of course, but they are so-called governance issues as well. So as part of this bill, there's also a proposed fund for township-based enterprises. And I know most of you sitting here will, 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 will attest to the fact that funding in our country is like, yeah, normally video was a few years back, yeah, at the comedy, so when he was trying to score some gold, but somebody kept moving the goalpost over and he kept missing and kept missing. So funding is almost like that. So sometime, yeah, so, so, so it's, it's something that has alluded a lot of our township-based enterprises. Even when you've got a viable business proposal, the fact that you're from a township, you're already, your risk profile goes up. Even if you get the fund, you are, you are likely to be charged higher interest than someone who is somewhere. And sometimes it's, it's very painful, because if you look at Alex and Santin, if you're on the other side of the road, your risk profiling may be higher or it may be expensive for you to, to, to get money. But just a stone throw, in fact, if you throw a stone from the other side of the road, you can actually hit someone on that side. That person on the other side gets favorable conditions because of where they are and so. You know, those, those funny things that you experience in, 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 especially in terms of funding of businesses. So, so with the, with this bill or this act, there's a proposal to introduce a fund tailor-made for township-based enterprises. One is that this fund must provide affordable and accessible, it must be accessible. It must also provide affordable credit or loans to township-based enterprises. Because sometimes, I agree, we know in our country, there's a lot of money in, that everybody's trying to target and fund businesses, no? But somehow this money never seems to get to businesses. So, so what this fund, what this bill is saying is that this fund must be affordable and accessible to, for township-based enterprises, which is very important. It must be accessible, but it must be affordable. There must also be a guarantee of repayment, meaning that when you package some of the solutions, it must also include, for example, insurance and so forth, so that it helps in terms of repayments of obligations. And this fund must also finance capacity building interventions. It must also finance research and development and innovation, transfer of technology and, and so forth. So it's, it's, it's a very important introduction. And, and I think just in terms of the design, so as a province, Rautem Province through the treasury has committed about two hundred and fifty million to the fund. And IDC, you know IDC, the Industrial Development Corporation, also committed two hundred and fifty million to the fund. But the plan is that this fund must at some stage be a one billion fund, targeting only township-based enterprises. And the, the difference here is that other than the, the funds being accessible, being affordable and so forth, one is that in, if we are going to, to fund township enterprises using the, the conventional tick box approach, nobody will be funded. And there are many other things that we've picked up. One is that a lot of people that run businesses, not all of them, maybe not you here, maybe not you here. There are a lot of people in the township that run businesses are blacklisted. It means if you're blacklisted and you want to grow a business, nobody will fund you. And obviously it means we are pushing you to machonise, and machonise a lot, a hundred percent interest, as an example, no? So what this thing does is that instead of assessing applications based on profiling and so forth, you, you, which you flip the script, you assess it based on viability of the business and available data. So if somebody has been running a business for a period of time, they are blacklisted, they've got those, but they've got the potential to grow. You need to be able to be able to consider on those basis than just say, I, as a director of this company, you are blacklisted, therefore you can't access any other assistant in this, in this. So, so, so it's a very important change in terms of how we, we will usually fund enterprises in our country. The second one is that instead of government, because we acknowledge that government has been inefficient in terms of getting the money to businesses on time and so forth and so forth. Instead of doing that, you, government, you avail this money as wholesale lending for guys that can actually do it better in the, in, in the market, preferably guys in the township that have license to handle money and dis, disperse money and so forth. So, so, so that is very important. I mean, there are examples where somebody will come and say, I've got a, I've got a contract, I need two hundred thousand to buy material by Monday next week, I need it now. And then they submit application. And then somebody somewhere in an entity will take, will then take three, four, four weeks to process. By the time you get the money, you don't need the money, you've lost the contract. So what we are saying is that we need a, we need a system that is agile, that will respond, that will be tailor-made to the type of enterprise that we find in the township. Otherwise, what's the point? We know every year more than four billion is sent back to treasury, because it cannot reach intended beneficiary. So that is very important. I just thought I should just give you those examples around why, why we need a, a different funding approach than what we have in the market at the moment. And I've already spoken to the purpose. So I think just a few things that I need to make reference to in terms of the fund. One is that on page twenty-one of the, of the, this document, no? So there's a proposal to, no, no, on page twenty-two, sorry, that there has to be a, a, a board for this fund. And I won't go through all, all the, all the details. But, but safe to say that for you to be on this board, you must be, you must be South African, for example, to be on this board. I think it's on page twenty-three, if you look at the appointment of board, it's, it's, it says that it has to, it has to have more than, not less than seven members or not more than eleven. As mentioned earlier, those are usually your governance issues. So it basically says, we can have a board for this fund, it must have so many people. And also outlines how this And also outlines how these people must be appointed. And who can qualify to be in this board, if you look at page twenty-four. It also talks about people who can be disqualified. No, uh, it says that if you are not a citizen of the republic, um, if you look at number, number C, no? Well, number C or or number D, for example, or if you are of a sound mind, you can be a member of the board. Uh, and of course, to for you to be declared to have a sound mind, it's a medical process is followed and so forth and so forth. But also, uh, if you have a controlling interest in any business that may have a conflict with the, so conflict of interest, for example, you may not be on the board. Uh, and many other things, so including if you have a criminal record. Um, as you know, in the financial space, uh, if you are charged with fraud or all those things, it becomes difficult to be on these boards. So there are those conditions uh that are proposed, which is qualifies people from be members of this board, no? And then on page twenty-five, it just introduces the terms of office for board of members. So they're going to be in the office for not for the period, not exiting three years. And it also says that um a member can, you can be a member of this board for two terms, sort of. Uh, and also talks about termination or how you can be removed from office. So if you are, you can be on this board and and if you do certain things, you can be removed from this board as well. And then page twenty-seven talks about the filling of vacancies. Uh, so which is very important that uh it's it's you must, if you want to be on this board, for example, uh, you pay attention to this section, but uh, uh, those people who should list that. I think there's a, there's an area where it talks about the qualification or at least, but I think we'll come to it. Yeah. Uh, you, for example, the qualifications or the experience or the expertise that you need to have to be on this board. And then the board will establish committees, and these committees will help in terms of running uh the business of the board. And if you look at page twenty-eight, it talks about the expert and other assistants. So this board can also say, for example, eh, we need a specialist in technology, one, two, three, whatever it is. And then that person can be recruited to help the board run their affairs and meet the objectives of the act. And then also on page twenty-eight, the uh, the board will have meetings. Um, and so forth, so so like I was saying, some of them are governance related issues, but they are very important to, that they need to be reflected here. And then on page thirty, it talks about the minutes of meetings, remuneration and allowances, uh, dissolution of the board. But the the member of the executive consent can dissolve the board if they are not, and we've seen in our country where a a minister feel that eh, this board is no longer helping us achieve our objective, they can, you can dissolve the board. So it's not, it's it's something that is allowed in terms of our our corporate governance in our country. And on page thirty-one, it talks about accessing of the funds, which is very important. It says any township-based enterprise may, on application, access the funds by way of credit, loan, factoring, guarantee, micro-insurance from the fund. So so those are some of the benefits that must accrue to enterprise. So that means the board must make sure that they, whatever it is that they're doing, they enable township-based enterprises to access um funds by way of credit, loan, factoring, guarantee, micro-insurance. And in this case, factoring meaning buying of uh of invoices and so forth. Uh, what else is important here? And then the next section just talks about the accounts of the of the of the funds and also annual reports. So it's more around transparency. So the boards obviously must prepare annual reports, which then reports against what they mandate that they have been given, uh, so forth. So I'm sure you can you can hear that a lot of this is more governance stuff around once this thing is is announced. Uh, who must be in the board, who can, who must, who will be disqualified from being on the board. Um, what are the, what the, sort of the uh, the capacity or the experience or educational qualifications that people will have? Some will have legal, obviously, background, accounting and so forth. If you look at page, sorry, I'll take you back a bit, on page twenty-three, it talks about the appointment of the board, no? And here it talks about um people that can be in this board. One is, if you look at number twenty-two subsection ten A, here one member is an attorney or an advocate admitted, eleven or B says another member is an accountant or an auditor. Another member is because of their reason or their knowledge in the financial services sector. And one is knowledgeable in your socioeconomic development. Uh, one, knowledge of trade, industry, finance and economy. Another one, proven business acumen. So 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 those would be the the criteria, or at least the qualification, or the expertise of people who would be on this board. Uh, yeah, so I thought I should also, I don't usually spend that much time on this section because it's mainly governance. But I thought it is fair that I just highlight. So that Iluana, if you want to be on that board, you can already say, yes, I'm an attorney, I've I have a business. Uh, I have not been criminally charged before, I want to be on this board, something like that, I want. So so it it can also help you in terms of decision-making as well. But also, you can also propose how, what what are the things that you you think can be added uh in this area around the the fund as well. I agree, remember, we are, we are engaging, you can, you can still make, you can still propose uh things that you think can be added here, or at least to improve uh this document. But at the end of the day, we we're looking for your inputs, so you can help us improve this thing. So it responds to your needs as a business. And then on page thirty-three, on on um on chapter six, it makes reference to application of the Act to municipalities. Um, as you know, municipalities are very important. Uh, a lot of the things we do happen in municipal space, so we need, municipal role is quite important in the implementation of this thing. So so basically, um, if you look at this, the second paragraph around township development by law, so and we'll 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 come into it in, so basically, what what the act says is that municipalities, the act introduces what you call as a model standard by law in terms of the constitution. What it then says is that municipalities must must adopt the principles of this act within six months after it's approved or adapt, so it it makes provision for adoption. So meaning that if you've got a municipality that does not have capacity to to do, to review their bylaws and stuff, they can adopt the model standard by law and implement it, so which has the principles of this thing. Or sometimes you may find that the municipality has bylaws that are consistent with the application, with the with the principles of this thing. They don't, they don't have to change anything. So is that that you change because you need to 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 get to a level where you are, you 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 adhere to this law? You you can change, or where you are already consistent, you can just continue implementing because you are consistent with the application of this of this uh act. But definitely, if you look at page thirty-three, it talks about uh this adopting or adapting principle approach that is introduced as part of this uh process. So so municipalities will have six months to to do that. So once, let's say this thing is approved by March this year, it's an act. So municipalities are then given six months to be able to sort sort a lot of those things out. But there's also a provision that where municipalities feel that they need additional time, they can ask for extension, add three months. But in terms of uh this process, once this thing is passed into act, it's a law of the provinces binding on all, on all organs of state. Anybody who does not do it, they're breaking the law. So including municipalities, including provincial, uh, organs of state, including private business and so forth and so forth. So so that is very important, I think, point of emphasis uh in terms of um this process. And on page thirty-five is basically just general provisions around, um, when you develop, when you develop a, a uh, a law like this, you must also make provision to change and to change where you need to change. And why is it important? Because I I'm sure most of you will know with the with the PFMA, every year or second, third year, they come up with a regulation nine or regulation ten, regulation thirteen. It's because there's something in the PFMA that is no longer responding positively to society and you address it through introduction of regulations. So even in this case, M E C may come and say, eh, this funding thing is not helping us to reach our SMM in the township. Maybe after two years, three years of implementation. And then M E C can say, let's introduce a regulation to help us block that gap and this is how. So that provision is also made so that it is not cast in stone forever. So where you, where you need to make adjustments to accommodate changes in society, for example, you may do that. We never thought there is some stage in our lifetime, we wouldn't need to go to a bank to access your money. I mean, now, some people don't even touch money for like a year. No, so meaning that the 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 financial services sector had to adjust to that change in society. So even in this case, so there might be a time when how you fund, you fund or support township enterprises requires a bit of a shift or a change. Uh, and then you then you you introduce a regulation which enables you to still achieve the objectives of this thing. Um, I thought I should emphasize that point. And then on page thirty-seven, I think is the last two, last page. On page thirty-seven, it just basically introduced the the principles of this model standard by law that we have already developed. Municipalities will adopt or adapt to. Uh, and for example, it introduces building standards, um, let me just, yeah, it introduces building standards applicable to areas in the township, which is very important. If if townships were not designed to accommodate business, zoning was not as well previously. So that means that, uh, yeah, introduction of building standards applicable to areas in the township becomes very important. But also the municipalities must also consider in providing permits or granting permits, alternative building technology. And uh and that is very important because today, you can actually upgrade your backyard room, for example, using alternative material, whether it is a container solution or prefab solution. And you can also choose that instead of connecting yourself to municipal grid, you're going to put solar and other technology there. But if you go to municipality, it may not be easy to get that permit. So I say municipalities must also be able to uh move with the time and accommodate building technology, alternative technology in in term, in in this space as well, in the township. Uh, but also number C is that when new developments are approved in the townships, there must also be an assessment of displacement of local firms. And where possible, um, the 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 should also be provision for inclusionary development opportunities, like in the malls as we, as we were saying earlier. Uh, so that is very important. And taxi ranks also must be given overlay rights to build, commit to commercial entities as well around the taxi hubs uh as well. And the other important point that I needed to emphasize is the, as as we mentioned earlier, that for us to connect, for us to connect our townships in in terms of technology, uh, we we also need to make sure that we provide broadband infrastructure. And that is a private sector-led investment drive. But government can play a role in enabling it to happen in terms of, for example, how we process our way leaves, how we turn around applications around our way leaves and so forth and so forth. So at the moment, in terms of research, uh, I think sixty percent of people in the township access information using their mobile phones. And it's much more expensive than than, um, you know, access to broad, when you've got proper, like when you've got proper a broadband infrastructure, like your fiber and so forth. So that's the first point. One is that i- if you're going to address issue around access to information, it must be also cheaper and reasonable to access the data, the data problem. Um, and then also must also allow for alternative technology to be able to connect townships in other areas in in our country. Instead of trenching on the side of the road like we see in our township, uh, where the the yellow king, the pink guys or the yellow guys will come and trench and put cables. And sometimes it's a mission because they don't even close the those holes for for weeks. So but all you're saying is that in other areas, instead of trenching, you can use what they call straight finisher. So you can mount these receivers on on poles, um, and other buildings around that are safe, obviously. But I know what you're thinking already, you're already thinking about crime, no? Or if if you put this thing on a, like like the like the tower batteries are being stolen and so forth. But all I'm saying is 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 an alternative. In some instances, instead of uh trenching and digging on the side of the road, you can still provide connectivity using alternative technology. And our country is a bit slow in that area. So we're in this uh proposed legislation, we want to drive faster, um, uh, move there as well. And all of these must be able to make sure that they are, they they also in in include a principle of inclusionary principle. So where you are trenching or you are putting alternative, uh, you know, receivers like your in through straight finisher, you must also make sure that there's proper participation of local SMMs in that area. We don't just see people coming and digging into a township, we don't even know anybody there or whatever. We know in our townships, there are people who have got licenses, for example, ISP licenses, so they can be able to be last mile providers. At the moment, a lot of the big guys, what they do is they become, they provide infrastructure and they become last mile providers. And so we're saying that we need to be able to allow emerging township license holders, people who have ISP licenses to also be last mile connectivity providers as well, as an as an example. So I will pause here for now and and hopefully, um, you can help us in terms of your inputs to to improve this document. Uh, of course, there's no piece of legislation that is perfect. So this is proposed, it's not a legislation that is being implemented, it is proposed and it will only be implemented once it's passed into an act. So so appreciate your inputs in actually improving this document so that when we implement it, it will then benefit you as township-based enterprises. I thank you, Chappas, and I'll pause here for nothing.
No, thank you very much, uh, Daddy Masha. I think it's a long presentation, but it worth it. We always, and I'm happy that all of you, you have been paying attention. But before I give you the platform, let me clarify what you have seen before. One, I didn't allow the member to speak because already we started with the presentation. So I didn't want to disturb the presentation. But the point was raised, was raising was a valid point. That is the local councillor. And obviously, when we come to a area, the councillor should know, we need to respect that councillor. I I I think you need to understand it, he was really right to raise that particular issue. He is the local councillor. So we're just investigating why it bypassed him, that he did not know that we are really coming. But the point that I wanted to make, we are not here only for the people of Yestras. That is for Twani. That's why you come from various townships and then you are here so that you make your own input. So it's for the people in Twani, not for Yestras. But because we advertise it in your city press, in your sweatton, in the radios, everybody can come. It's not for only people with businesses. Everybody can can come and make the input. But now, now, like as I said, we are here to listen to you. I'm going to hand it over to Menyobi. Kena tali divide ang when you raise your hand. And then again, you speak at the language of your convenient. Rakwaga nager, ushumisha language yagao, the way wana utlat express akawana, it's fine. But let's stick to the bill. I agree we presented the bill. Skalabalele lo chadi ntro kai kai, chadi whatever, it's not general here. It's about this bill. And you have been noting down the issues that you are going to raise. And I hope we are not going to forget those who are up there. So we're going to divide a little natural for a chance to raise your issues and all that. But in our platform, Baba Lukili in the platform, I will welcome Ntade Adams. Leena Ulukile in the platform. And again, I'm going also to And again, I'm going also to welcome May Ungosimalobani. Also she has locked on the platform. And then also May Fasia Hassan. So they are in the platform, they are part of this meeting. So this is where we are, they are welcomed. But now, without wasting time, leaving very free, ne? Be free in raising your questions. Giafa, Me, Nube.
Twelve, yeah. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Okay. Just to make a summary of what he was saying. And also apologizing that most of you only got this bill today, ne? Sorry, I apologize. So just in summary of what he was saying, what is the purpose of this bill? Why? How is the township defined? Who is going to benefit? And then how will the small businesses, whether you say pavement, you take a corner, whether you lap a drop in, if my pavement is in, you take a corner, no man either, you say look shiny or mkuquini or abanyabatengisa next to Imori. So who is, how will the small business, wherever we are, benefit? Let's register, because someone there have not registered. And where do we register? Who is going to be helping us to register so that we qualify? And if we can register, will I qualify? Those are things that you need to break in terms of, okay, register still, pay the ten years, register still, but I've never been given the funding. And then who will be funded? That's a key question that you need to understand, who will be funded. Or if you must tell us in terms of how do you see it? So there will be a board, then that will manage that fund. And then from yourselves in terms of, so the people that are, who are composing the board. And then currently, you might be having a problem trading with the malls. How is this bill going to be helping you? For you to be able to sell your product to the malls or supply the product with the mall? Your security, rather than Imoli isn't available. So you will have to tell us. And then in monitoring, and then who will enforce? So how will that be monitored? And then, who's going to be supporting you so that you trade? And then agriculture? Access to infrastructure? So where are you going to be trading? How far will that place be? How will it be accessible to yourselves? So that it helps you to trade and benefit. So those are the things you need to raise. Okay, and then, yeah. Okay. One. A common to, okay, Nizela. Okay. Lapambi lakomuntu two. Or three. Four. Five. Six. Number one.
Sanbonani.
Yes, one day.
Lika malam, Ngungusandra, wagamgwenya, plot one twenty-three. Ni fola under region five, what ninety-nine? Minen nginimbuto kuti njengami, ngingayati i business, kuti ihamba njani, gwendakalali, ni blank. Nginida i clarity gini, nginida i way forward gini, ngifunakubano loasi oltile, nithensa amakui nyala nklala kon. Number two. Ngifunukuzbona, nithensa i kukuku, nisaplaya i uluets, nisaplaya i supermarket, epeken pay, nisaplaya i check cash, nisaplaya i shop right. How can I get there? Who's going to supply me? Who's going to give me all the information until I get a point or until I get understand? How can I, how can I build my business until get right? That's my question. So and also, nitele ukuzangoba, sisenda weni? Enya koduse ne shopping complexes, enya koduse ne towni? So okutitina, singasiza galaga njani? And ebengafisa i government, isi vaga sheli? Jongo ba izela, iso stela, kutinamla njee? Ifunukulonja umteto otile e government? Okutitina, bantu sikheli, slapapansi, singa ghasi, singa bonagali? Sisese sibonagali nati? Sisese sisboni, si megali, si konu uvoja abantwana betu emakai? So ilo i questioniam, niabon. What ninety-three, plot one twenty-three, region five?
Thank you. Number two.
Eh, kialu du medish. Oavole la homo, kisilopasha. Code ninety-nine, plot seventy-nine, kuliwa kinseref. Eh, lerena, sewule disewuleje.
Nde Masiarri.
Number two. Sirlul. Okay, number three.
Nde Masiarri. Zinalanga nde, nde cheni chitangoni. Nde wanarawat thirty, harankua. Nende mutu, wenda register a company, na twenty-one. Nde chet register a company, it was very much difficult to ruka, you can get funding. Especially when it comes to the requirements that the government have put. So in other words, it means that, it means that. Okay. Ndomandichkuri, I have registered a company twenty-two-one. So the, the funding problem, it is a stumbling block to all of us. So when you were explaining the bill, I didn't hear the requirements, like age restriction. Like how many people do you guys need in a business? Because some of the points, when you get there, they ask you, how many of you are you? So problem yangadi ori, riwanara, nne, I've got an idea alone. There's no one else next to me who can have the idea like I do. So it is much difficult to get somebody who can help you with the idea that they don't know. So recruiting people so that I can get funded, it is a little bit difficult. So but I heard you, you said you are going to ease the requirements and what so forth. So what I'm trying to ask now is, can you guys bring the resources very close to us? So that we can access. And then the last thing is age restriction. It is a problem. I just want you to clarify that one. Thank you.
Yeah, no age, eighteen to thirty-five. You don't get opportunities from the below ages. Then you reach thirty-five, you are further than that, you have never benefited. Thank you. Number four.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to thank, to thank everyone who's attending this event. Okay, I'm saying thanks for everyone who has attended the event and also our panelists or commissioners at the stage there. So my question will be short about the funding. We have registered the company. I have my group here. So what I want to know is that, what are the organizations that I can go and then hand up my letter or my business plan so that I can be funded? Because we've been sending different emails to different organizations like NIDA, NYDA, so we didn't get a good response for them. So now, I want to get a point that where can we get a funding so that we can go with our business? Actually, we want to manufacture a plastic in Kaline and Refile, what ninety-nine? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number five.
Thank you, Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee, members and also the officials from the government. I can say we welcome the bill. Yeah, there's one thing that is just an input. What I've realized, that also the franchising is playing a very crucial role, especially when coming to township economic development. So my suggestion also goes that, what if especially we, the government talks with the property developers, especially those who are building the malls, when coming to franchising, so that they can consider the local people first. It must be their priority. Because what I've realized is that there are big malls there, there are franchises like the KFCs, whatever and so on. But when you check those shops, they are not owned by the locals. They are owned somewhere, we'll find a person that is overseas, but he has something like a KFC or chicken legging. Let us consider our local people first. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number six.
I've been re-trenched twenty-twenty, I've started a business, career exchange. So business aga salia affectaki mapuriso. Because each and every time, every Saturday, banjela veala, banjela chelete. So kaitigirala urki, kubona kupulisteshen. Kubuchawor, kitzwanchekire, ingor business aga i chuele pil. So bamputawor, kitzwancheki beli title dish. So ever since Kifitas Kirleka twenty-seventeen, even today, I can I own, kialevo.
Thank you very much. Bengekui ne, ku number five. Gilana majeh. Uzoti one foot, ne? One. One, yeah. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Zokina, ngalab. Ay, tengilba, tengilba, ngan. Tesh six, ne? Seven. Eight. Nine. Nine. Navy. Ten. Eleven. Ten, nine, eleven, pambi. Ten merun. Nine, yeah, eleven. Okay, twelve, yeah. Eh, pezulu, sikona? Okay, after o twelve. Okay, after u twelve, uzos again, number one. Epi Mike?
Nkana ifi. Kinalibu thata mu, nnesowing nyatu nga, ma angnamshin. Mshinwa mupugi ile. Manse benkalo ngan eto lap. Eh, ngomakweta u, olala shoshanguve, extension two, old thirty-nine. Pedil.
Sabo. Number two.
Ashelika. Kika iso fromo teti harankuana? Eh, kimo ngo eh, libunda teva. Kimo ngo eh, libunda teva ngo ya rna kia utusa in terms of businesses, see entrants, see leading skills. Or basically we are running skills and development ngo and working with the community to develop kadi loze lungore diashota, skasi tisa di skills eh, development. Kamkogakalustek. So and as I've heard, unalebatwanchi mobile lungore, bamudi businessing and informally so. So negibutsa hori, much as learnarle ngo ya skills and development eh, trying to aid yonata ba eyo ya hori, eh, how do we assist batwailungore? Banale kachlao ya di businesses eh, but they can't go forward because of compliance. Luhi ti hori, how do you run a business eh, ho ya kopil? Karo kala wa would send you question, no, there are business people, batwamilie informally, but going forward eh, it's like the pill, pilli, pilli batsholala konkle, because of the seed eh, knowledge, skills eh, tawo runa a business properly. Low accessa de opportunities te lungore eh, the legislature ebala lakazon, abanazona. So negibutsa kere, how do we come up as an ngo ya tawo lay arena? And then lelena legislature, rekopa ne, and then retuse batu, but because of we have those skills, that's why I reconno. Volunteerahura eh, what you are doing as skills and development and then reconno ya hapaha pali to eh, structure te lungore batu in the community, batwala gudifitel. But my question to cut my eh, statement short, kori. Do you have eh, provision, yahora, how do you assist these people to get into eh, their businesses formalized, banale skills eh, but not developed, so that they can move forward and then this be eh ba, eh ba, eh ba tusi. Thank you.
Thank you. Number three.
Eh, dumela ngao feela. Bizo laka kenna tebohotesi. Ke tlaha kiloko Hamanskrala, I'm one of the directors. Sa an organization called Youth in Action Against Poverty and Unemployment. Now, clearly everything, eh Mister Mashaw. Eh Mister Mashaw, on a lighter note, on a lighter note, my friend. Gerata who experienced ah, the reference of cannabis. Me and you, we share the same WhatsApp group. No, but eh, here's, here's, here's what I find intriguing with, with, with the bill. Eh, as it's trying to, 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 to address the problems that the Kasi people are having. And it also tried to address eh, the issues here, economy. And you still remember you referred to this thing here, fourth industrial revolution. Now, most people who are, who are skillful in the fourth industrial revolution system are the young people. Now, having said that, we still have an issue of the very same young people being pushed away out of the system by age restriction. If the bill can deal with the fact that this thing here, eighteen to thirty-five doesn't work, then the bill will be addressing the, 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 the problems people are, are having. Because whether you go to military, it's eighteen to thirty-five. I'm presently, I'm thirty-seven years old. I'm the director of the company that we are, we have. Now, when it comes to applying for other things, that means I'm suppressing the guys that I'm working with. Because my age is above them. I'm working with young individuals, we are only five in the company. But because of age, my age, there are some things we cannot get. Simply because the bill doesn't address the fact that when you are eighteen to thirty-five and over, you still have a purpose, you still have something to serve. Now, if the bill can address that and also assure that eh, people who are above thirty-five. I'm talking to you like this, I'm very much energetic. And let's look at the true fact. We have young individuals who are eighteen to thirty-five, the very same age that the bill or the government is requiring, eighteen to thirty-five, all of them. Half of them in fact, let me not say all of them, half of them, they are under drug problems. So, the eighteen to thirty-five you are referring to, which one are you referring to? Because those ones, they need rehab centers, of which I'm the one who can provide that. We have organizations like Sangka, let me be honest, it doesn't work, let me tell you why. You say you rehabilitate young people to go to, to, to have fresher minds. You take them to rehab for two weeks, they become clean for those two weeks. What about those days that they are coming out? We need a center that creates something called Drug With No Relapse. You go to rehab and you don't have to relapse anymore. My organization needs to provide that because we have the requirements of that. But because of my age, we cannot do that, let the bill address something like that. We have a young man here who's addressing educational problems. Simply because of the age that he's in, the bill doesn't cover him. He's pushing the narratives of young people who don't have skills, who don't have computer skills at home, at Kasi areas, simply because of his age, he cannot get funding. So let the bill try and address that. Then apart from that, you must still remember that we have older people who have nothing to do with computer literacy, but they want to change their lives. Let the bill deal with it. And the most important part, let the bill address the fact that political parties doesn't have anything to do with people's sustainability. You have political leaders who are disrupting polit- political problems everywhere around the Kasi. You have leaders who are supposed to be there providing everything for the community, but they pocket everything. Let the bill address that. I thank you.
Thank you. Number four.
Eh, dumela. Okay, I thought I was number five, but it's okay. Eh, nagin na tapelo. Ke twako shoshanguve, what twenty-nine, I'm a member of a business forum, koso shanguve. So, na concernaka ke hori. Mudi businesses in zoto tle te lungore, they were affected during COVID nineteen te lungore, leka chenu te lungare sa exista.
Eh, kulmela ku Mike?
Oh, okay. My question is, the business zoto tle te lungore, di affecte hile during eh, that eh, hard lockdown. Is there any way mobiling moe lungore, the business te vya diro consideri wana? And the other thing eh, lungore, lerena is a forum, re demo hile ku, most businesses eh, di operator informali. Meaning, most businesses adia registeriwa. And then, herilebella, rwana okari, there is lack of information eh, tammo batung, especially batwabanale passion ya di businesses eh, around the township eh, oro, wana mo mo area ngarile moyo. Most people wabanale passion ya di business. Refila hori, maybe, the platforma te lungore, government eh, di create ahutlisa information, maybe, batwa balimohaima, wakonehudi fitel. For example eh, na kwe kancela rawulela hori, batwamo aba iti hori kachenu eh, wana le eh, departmente te lile mori na kachenu, batwa wana ma aba iti, but then, wana le te la eh, lungore libere kisi te. Kubutsa batu, hori kachenu wana le mo, bat, batwa, ba wana mo aba iti. So maybe the platforma te le libere kisa, hutlisa information mo batu, babanga wakonehudi accessa, rekope la hori eh, lelebele le ona eyo. So, our business forum eh, lerena registeriwe as a private company. But from experience eh, nanle ona wana banon, rwana okari eh, government eh, is a considera who funda the private companies. Because rwana okari, whenever they see a private company, rwana okari is only for own benefit. But then, this is a business forum, we are also eh, involved mo di economic eh, I mean, community project, moe lungore. Lerenara kona utusa batu. So the other concern, eh, relebele te ngore. Wana le di local tax shops te lungore, adi oni kere na di locals. And then most of those tax shops, adia hira, batwamo area ngzari. But then, renavatoma ni business, rele di locals. Refila okari eh, melau eh, hatella re na too much. Because wana banon, wana le me aho eh, lungore ahile, kiri supermarket eh, holo holo. And then, kili loze lungore, moa ho atenga, wana le plan next. Wa ebonor, this thing eh, gawe la batu, but do eh, because of moto, ai ahile, maybe, kawara swakam. Okar melau ona eh ba fit, but na henka thoma, wana banon kariki, aha supermarket, temola, sama thoma wakan yaga plan. Batwana le me aho eh, lungore, raywana, she operator. So rekope la hori, mobiling, di loza utu anale, wana te uli reconsider. So, questionama fellow kori eh, the business that has eh, lewana mo, mobiling eh, batu benefita na. Because we have people wa lungore eh, bak comply, ogre mo ta registera business eh, ana le paper wake ote, but then, osantane atoma. Eh, batwa wia oliva na batu consideri wana. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number six. Just, just a minute. Goguni ne, if ubuza i question kandefutu ya ikaba, ngan ukuti, kumela ngabe guense kala eh, recommendation, uvunyala fotu kurekomenda. Number six.
Dumela. Wa walela mo kistefina malapan, ke twa kili Hamanskrala. Ko keka na guardians, what seventy-three? Eh, question zaka, adio batze dinchin. Eh, yama thomo kuhori. Kino wa, kiu kiu wulela so mopila eh, committee eh, linteng. Kuhori eh, asma thomo, ki attenda like the program see, sa legislature. And then replanter razor issue eh, one. Kuro keka na guardiansi, ikavari leki, normally, iko site ya kimopitori eh, ka site ya, ya north. And ikavari leki three provinces. Renso kolu homo, kokeka na guardiansi. But, aona any development eh, linteng, kokeka na guardiansi. Hekere, recovery leki, ke, ke, ke provinces eh, three. Ke hautenge, kimpumalanga, kelimpo. And then, remoto kwa adi nu ken game reserve. If there's anyone wa itindi nu ken game reserve, remoto kwa adi nu ken game reserve. Kokeka na guardiansi. Rena, renalidi NPO te dilinteng. But aona NPO or NGO, elwano more ya functiona as we speak. Kore, there are more than two hundred or three hundred. But there's only three or four, telwano more dia function. And then, na hanan remoto, mopila game reserve, di torisi, di plantete na each and every day. So, regisa di vegi motile. Di vegi te oru di rega kar, di rega mo, twani market. So, nanake kupela hori, rekope la ler tien siri aso kokeka na guardiansi. Wana le mo me, babamba le wano more ba le ma, ba era agriculture. Di vegi te di regisuwa motile mole. Rekope la horu, momo wa he, o dang, oru mo di kue di nte di dang. Di torisi te di sanangamudi nu ken game reserve ka mole. Di rega di vegi, te di wa, te di wo di apian kamudi nu ken game reserve, di di rega mo, wo me, ba regisa mostrate mole. Esimmo me ba le batu, we buya twani market eh, buyo reka. Eh, babu eh, happy di torisi te di kereka mole, wana ro, ra loser. And then rekope la hapeli di trainings, te dilinteng. Kore lekata kokeka na rally, invite ale di NGO, te dilinteng, kokeka na guardiansi. La talato wono horu, wi la halangopleke nyera ya, na eh, eh site leniwa, eh site lena ke government. Rekope la government eh, eh te sirasi, kokeka na guardiansi. Kialevo.
Thank you. Number seven.
Tawela. Eh, nakina sfoto Daniel Makala, ke twa extension eighteen kamoma milodi. Eh, nakii questionaka ma thomo kichope la uvuji shaka bot. Bot eh, itlo create one, i create one on regional basis or on a provincial level or on a subrural basis na. And then, ye wwe, kinyoko uvuji shawor eh, ana was the plan. Yahora bot iska ta ya politiciana di issues. Ana, this bill itlo stopa bian, that bot or iska politiciana di issues. And then, I'm happy again that this bill eh, addressa di issues zakaas. So, kinyaka ukwishi shaka, ka, ka, this systematic slavery, ya age level and lay aware the politicians, they taking charge and suppressing reina kogras. So eh, this bill, kia kwa lewala kaya ona mara, I wanna plan where the business owners or the business wanna be batlo trainiwa bian, or oto tlishwa di service eh, bian, more ona. And how should they apply for funding? Or funding itlo, batwa accessa bian ka's house? And it's not everyone eh, who eh, literature ka, ka, ka technology. So, kiri method te di fin, te rote di bere kisha, who apply for funding? Kialevo.
Thank you. Number seven.
Eh, dumela. Bizo laka kenna Lucas, ke twa ko diva kens drive plot seventy-nine, what ninety-nine, vayam lotoroot. Eh, nne nekito walelaka eh, agriculturalnya, ana le rural development. Eh, lerena rele mpagatwa vachen drift, lerena le some infrastructures. Se sekar duza angore, redevelop, eh, si really youth. But those infrastructures, se di fetu rile, isolate for the community eh, for some people, ke walelaka di individuals. Eh, ke walela so, ke walela, mabaki nyawo eh, black arena, really diva kens drift. Arena leadership or some people ba ba gar fixes and information. Because everywhere, most of them business, we are in a busy road, mulotoroot. And we are next to the plot zamahoo amo, i, i, awre kisa lampoon, wana le sampa, do re kisa lampoon next to eh. So, nne nekiri eh, legislature, ke yetele di blackets, wana le bo plot one, two, three, go, what ninety-three, lewo di va kens drift. Because of we are tight, roundness ke ma lata. Aona marka ating, even the business, aona hori tuhore. So how can we get that information, rest na leadership?
Rest in a leadership, because of reform, oh, read, oh, yeah, my love, Varen Drift, as leadership. Arna even, single person, oh, caring, I get a volunteer, I get to be regular, eh, this community. But it's really one, two, three, four, we catch legislature, political parties, each and everything. But we are so called, and I was some people, some communities, they, they feel like leadership. Renarly for sorry, leadership, yeah, Varen Drift. So, how can we get, eh, maybe easy targets or register any campaign, or not a poultry side? Or not a more, guys, something, the event, that's like really youth. But those, eh, the, eh, the black, eh, the owner, I get individuals. Renalily, eh, legislate, the Lord who's a, yeah, who are, re, 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 reset those infrastructures. Or learn, or, 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 repeat. No register, let more than five companies, three NPOs, but I, if you look, so, bar, arena, black. But the blacker, now, it's on, is out our community. So, I go back or legislature, rescue, I will, I want, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, I'm not too late, eh, the, the communities, it's all, I don't know, it's a lot, it's a copan, it's on, day by day. Because of no, right, you have a legislation, it's a, I'm a, I was a copan, I left, I have a more. I'd say, oh, 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 submit, maybe the problem still come on. Thank you.
Sabo, number eight. It's a good, it's a footy, it could, my, I'm a, I recommend, yes, thank you, number eight.
Yeah, I did, I mean, this, I live, so, like, I keep, my, yes, hala, hala. I'm residing, go, what ninety-nine, go refill, eh? Under region five. Can I lead, the, the smaller, yeah, nah, eh, question, so, request. Eh, yeah, my Tomo, more legislation, yeah, car, need a bill before it pass. The issue, yeah, who are we, the hope, I love, who, who, how, how, how hope, it's a defense. Interest, yeah, thing, eh, by, eh, gang, gang, how battle? And the pilot, eh, oh, battle, I'm guy, oh, nah, gee, how long, gee, I'm a Tomo. Yeah, but, eh, the issue, yeah, youth. And to come to my, eh, each and every person, I swear, I come. Youth, eh, wait, more, the, the, but, eh, and I guess, hello, some, my, yo, yo. Each and every province or area. And, eh, rebacual, la, con, eh. I get to be, how best can, maybe legislature, yeah, Rena, eh, 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 adopt, then, banana, ba, the Dracula, sit, eh, to Rena, eh. Rescue, but, oh, oh. Eh, reason being, one, I can, I know, oh, moi, I'm a, I'm a, oh, na, la, who are we? But share the ideas, I get to lead the politician or lead the officially, nah. Then they take their ideas, but they re, eh, see, but fit, I come, oh, my, have on. And I, Baba, I'm a liar, spirit, the moral, gee, who are you, yeah, Rena? The weak ones end up, baliko, the drugs, eh, give a thought. Hani, recall, eh, the plan, yeah, who are we, what, do, eh, banana, eh, 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 lily, into hole. God, eh, or, there, Rome, eh, research, eh, the skill, it's a, oh, na, you, ah, the Eva. And then, let, eh, let, what's, or, rebay, really, eh, we are talking about agricultural, rural development. Is a, yeah, reduce our, rural development, eh, can you, yeah, Rena? Can I, well, eh, ill, or, covid, eh, 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 yeah, re, Russia, catupa, covid, eh. Yeah, no, eh, re, Sasha, it's a legislature, eh, that's all. Economy, eh, we, eh, re, it's, oh, Sarah, like, a mo, call it, the communities, yeah, Rena. Re, eh, go, but, eh, 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 leave on, eh, rebay, use, eh, rebay, monitor, eh, bakra, income, eh, and da, monitor, eh, eh, eh. Who are economy, eh, nah, me, eh, nah, me, eh, leave on, eh, I'm a, I'm a, she, eh, the drugs. As my, eh, eh, comrade, eh, mole, oh, let's, eh, he set a mouthful and, eh, and touch, eh, 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 youth, eh, 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 yeah, eh, la, mopelak. Leo, eh, I can, eh, 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 well, eh, move, eh, I'm a, the ploto.